Good morning, our high school. Nice to see you, I'm Angela, I'm the canary with this group. This is the Rand Moore sextet, now that I'm up here, the sextet means six. Rand Moore is the drummer on the drums. Rand is a graduate from Mooreburg High School. And one of the things that I'd like for musicians and the non-musicians to notice about this group are whole several things. One is that it's not about all being in your face all the time. They're constantly using dynamics, they're constantly looking at each other to hear what's happening next, to take each other on, and all those great things. So, they did a couple of things in the first two numbers that we're gonna continue doing. The first tune that I'm gonna sing on is a number called "Just in Time", and we're all gonna get a chance to solo. And what I want you to listen for especially is Mr. Rand Moore's drum playing in this, because it's very melodic, and it's gonna be really easy to hear where we're gonna come back in. And one of the questions that I often get from other musicians is, how do you know when to come back in? Sure, you can count, and sure you can count along and keep the melody in your head, but it's a lot of feel and habits and knowing the forms of the music. And the more you do it, the easier it gets and the better it gets. So, first tune I'm gonna sing with the group, "Just in Time". Just in time, I found you just in time. Before you came my time was running low. I was lost, the losing dice were tossed. My bridges all were crossed, nowhere to go but now we are here. And now I know just where I'm going, no more time for fear, 'cause I've found a way. Just in time, you found me just in time. And changed my lonely life, lonely day. Before you came my time was running low. I was lost, the losing dice were tossed. My bridges all were crossed, nowhere to go but now we are here. And now I know just where I'm going, no more time for fear, 'cause I've found a way. Just in time, you found me just in time. And changed my lonely life, lonely day. There you go. Well, now we're gonna slow down a little bit, we're gonna do a ballad. And we've gotta keep these things a little short because you guys only have like thirty-five minutes. So, we're gonna run the whole piece down. And then my friend Vince Jesse here on guitar is gonna take the first chorus, and I'm gonna come back in on what's called the bridge. Meanwhile, rhythm section, keep things going, and Bill will fill in some really nice things behind me too. It's not the pale moon that guides me, that brings and lights me. It's just the nearness of you. It's your sweet conversation that brings this sensation. Oh. It's just the nearness of you. When I'm in your arms, so close to me. All my wildest dreams, they all come true. Yes, they do. And need no soul of lies to enchant me. If you would only grant me the right to hold you ever so tight and to feel in the night the nearness of you. When I'm in your arms and I feel you so close to me. All my wildest dreams, they all come true. And need no soul of lies to enchant me. If you would only grant me the right to hold you ever so tight and to feel in the night the nearness of you. Thank you, yeah, I think they do a super job. Let me take a little bit of time to introduce the band. We're all working musicians, and five of us out of the six do it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Bill Brown taught high school at Belleville and has been a working musician since he was very young. He is the same age as Elvis Presley. And yeah, he's an amazing musician. I play saxophone too, but I don't play around Bill. And the thing that I think Bill would shake his head to is, you can't pigeonhole yourself as one type of musician. All music is good music when it's done right. Bill has played blues, pokers, rock, jazz, and anything and everything, right? Funerals too, yes. Everything. On bass is Paul Schaefer, he works for the university in the music department. And he's also a guitar player and... John Schaefer, what did you say? John Schaefer, yes. And also, he plays many, many, many different styles. And on guitar today is Vince Jesse. Vince owns a bass repair shop on Manona Drive, and that's how he spends his day fixing up other people's basses. And is a fantastic guitar player who plays with many groups, including Fat Function. So, he's got the genres carried with rock and roll, jazz, country, everything, right? Maybe not so much country, yeah. On piano is Paul Mitch, he's the odd man out. He's a suit wearer by day, but a jazz musician by night, fantastic, piano playing. Came through his family, his dad's the drummer? Dad's the drummer. And so he grew up listening to a lot of great music. And of course, you met Rand Moore on the drums before, your Oregon high school name. He's a drummer, sort of a fender, he owns drums and more on Manona Drive. He teaches drum lessons. He's played with many, many people. He started off at Oregon High School here, of course, playing in all the different groups. Went to Berklee for music. And played with the circus and looked at the tree for years. And played with many, many other groups. Alright, so we're gonna finish up with a phone lover to end this, that is called "Bye Bye Blackbird". They're gonna be doing what's called trading fours in this tune. So, we'll make it quick, because I think now we've only got like three minutes left. Take up all my cares and woes, 'cause here I go singing low. Bye, bye, blackbird. Where's the body waits for me, sugar sweet, sugar sweet. That's my blackbird. No one here can love or understand me. What hard-looked stories they all hear me. Make my bed, light the lighthouse, I'll ride late at night. Blackbird, bye-bye. Take up all my cares and woes, 'cause here I go singing low. Bye, bye, blackbird. Where's the body waits for me, sugar sweet, sugar sweet. That's my blackbird. No one here can love or understand me. What hard-looked stories they all hear me. Make my bed, light the lighthouse, I'll ride late at night. Blackbird, bye-bye. Blackbird, bye-bye. Thank you very much, Rand Moore, Jazz Sextet. Thank you, welcome to Matt, nice job on sound, appreciate it.
I hope you liked that part of the summertime, the decorations. I did that fade-out at the end. I learned this technique when I was playing my high school orchestra. You guys ever do that? Get lost. Do we have time for one more or two more? Two. Three? Two. Rand's gonna go back to the piano, and then we're gonna wrap up. Yeah, what? Twenty minutes? Twenty minutes, we can play... Twenty minutes, we can play three songs. This is a, well, do a tune that I wrote, this is called "JD Meets the Rhythm Section", and if you're a, as long as it's an educational experience, this melody is a little bit longer. The first one we did was called a twelve-bar blues. This one is thirty-two measures long, and has two sections. The first section, we went to a very deep organizational process to figure out what to call the first section of the song. It's called the A section. There was a meeting of musicians, we went through the whole alphabet, and decided that universally, the first section of a piece of music would be called the A section. And then it was, from there, it was very easy to figure out what the second section would be called. It's called the... Who said W? This beat section. So you'll hear the A section played twice, here's what the A section sounds like. It's the A section, I played that twice up front. Then I played the B section, because I thought three times in a row would be kind of boring. But then, just to remind ourselves of what we're playing, I played the A section again at the end. They're each eight measures long, so there's four sections of eight-bar melodies. And seventy-five percent of the song is that same thing that I just played. And then there's the bridge, sounds like this, so you know where it is. Now, there's an underlying harmonic support structure under there. You guys ever heard of this song? Hit the road, Jack, you don't you know? I call that, I hit the road, Jack, arpeggiation. So you look here, that, you know, underneath the A section. But what about this? Good, there you go. Thank you very much. So, the B section is that arpeggiation, arpeggio. Instead of starting on this, it starts here. And it goes through a couple of keys. So that's the harmonic structure. You want to hit the road, Jack, for the A sections, heart, soul, under the bridge, the B section. Or you can just forget about all that. And just simply try your best to enjoy this. It's called JD Meets the Rhythm Section. Thank you very much. Welcome to know that. Matt and I did some trading off. I played a few bars and he played a few bars. And I went back and forth, got into conversation. That's the kind of thing that happens often in this kind of music. Sort of kind of trading, communicating, jamming with each other. It's sort of an exciting kind of music. I'll tell you a little bit about how I came to know Leila Sawyer and Matt. It started off when I was in college, University of Illinois, about nineteen seventy-four. I made the discovery that I could play something other than classical music on my violin. I told you I played some philharmonic music. But mostly, my interest in popular music was through playing the electric guitar and piano with bands. And the violin was still pretty much a classical instrument preserved for the orchestra. Wasn't quite sure how to work the violin into the music that I really was drawn to listen to and to perform on these other instruments. And I discovered a jazz violinist named Stephane Rappellet, from France. He had become very popular in eighteen thirties and forties, but I did not know about this person when I was studying the violin. When I heard a recording of him, then I said, "Ah, I'm gonna be a jazz violinist. That's what I wanna do." And I also got very excited about the idea of string education. Why did I have to wait all the way until I was a freshman in college to learn about this fabulous jazz violinist and be exposed to the idea that I could play this exciting kind of music called jazz? I had been in my high school jazz band, played electric guitar and bass, and referred me to play the violin. So I thought that it would introduce this concept earlier on in the street education, like having the street students be exposed to jazz and the role of improvisational music at a very early age. So I started a string camp, a jazz string camp up in Shell Lake, Wisconsin, five hours north of, called the Shell Lake Arts Center. Maybe some of you actually attended a camp up there. But this is around nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-eight. And one of my first students at that camp was Leila Sawyer. She had just got her first teaching position, I think, in Manitowoc, Wisconsin. And she was very interested in this music. And she brought some students over to this camp. So I've known Leila for quite some time. And eventually, I had this kid show up on cello. I think he was in eighth grade at the time. His name was Matt Turner. And he shows up and I was taken by my jazz camp. Years and years and years later, here we are. But he's one of the great string teachers of the state of Wisconsin, award-winning teacher in a fabulous school setting of, you know, three, four different orchestras here. And Matt has turned into be a fabulous musician, great piano player as well. I hired him to be in my band. It's just an amazing thing that can happen in your life when you find something that you wanna do and you start following your path. All of you are already on your path. And some of you may choose a musical path. Maybe you've done so already. Exciting, exciting time. Discovering what you want to do with your life. For me, it was music. And the violin was a conduit for me to discover different styles of music and to make long-lasting, lifelong friends and colleagues. Do you have any things to say? All this very long-winded. So did that second cup of coffee. Oh, I grew up listening to a lot of music that had nothing to do with the violin. I'm gonna sing a song for you now. This is written by a guitar player, Blind Willie Johnson. He got the name Blind Willie Johnson because he was blind. His name is Willie Johnson. It's called Soul of a Man. Soul of a Man. And if you're paying attention, the song has one chord. One chord. Pretty simple.
I just emailed Mike Grace today.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, July twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen. This is a meeting of the Oregon Village Board. It is five p.m. I'd like to call the meeting to order and request roll call, please.
Grenier?
Here.
Bolling?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Brethauer?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
In state.
Thank you. All present and accounted for. Item three A, three is public appearances. Item A, discussion regarding improving traffic safety issues at Oregon Middle School and possible board action. There's a note, if the board agrees with the recommendations, a resolution will be presented at the August third board meetings. There are people from the school here to represent us, so if you wanna come forward and walk us through it. And we do have materials in our packet. And welcome, to both of you.
Thank you.
So my name is Lisa Bullard-Cothr, and I'm not actually with the school district. I'm with Public Health Madison in Dane County. So I've been working with school districts across the county for probably the last fifteen to twenty years. And we, and this is a partnership that we have. I represent Public Health, I represent Safe Communities, and I represent Safe Kids Coalition. So, I've been working with school districts across the county for probably the last 15 to 20 years, and we, and this is a partnership that we have. I represent Public Health, I represent Safe Communities, and I represent Safe Kids Coalition. So, the Health Department has grants, we've had them for the last 10 years, to work with school districts to help them with improving traffic safety around schools, and we actually have funds that we use in order to help with that. Last year, we worked with the Oregon School District and worked with Prairie View and Another Wood Schools to help them with their school traffic plan. So, this year, we worked with the school district, and there's been quite a collaboration of agencies, the Police Department being very active with these conversations, Public Works, we've met with Mark. So, all of our community organizations, as well as, and the Fire Department also very active with the school district. So, as we went out there and we looked at the situation, it's been quite bad for quite a while, I understand. We went out there to look at it, and we met as a collaborative group to come up with recommendations. The school district is doing quite a bit to improve the situation, but one of the things, so you've got in the packet, I believe, that tells you a little bit about some of the things that we saw. And you see in the recommendations, we have a short-term recommendation and a long-term recommendation. With both of those, we have quite a bit of an issue with people on the roadway, and quite a bit of chaos within the period of time between drop-off and pickup. And like I said, the school district is doing quite a few things to try to improve that. The Health Department has funds for signage, both for the school district and for the village. And one of the issues that we've had is the difficulties of people getting across the street. And so, the proposed recommendations were, number one, to mark a crosswalk near the exit entrance of the school. We had, when we did, so we went out there and we did observations, and there's quite a bit of congestion right where the cars are going in and out, where the kids are trying to get across the street. So, the recommendation is not only to mark the crosswalk, also to remove the cars that are going to be in the, blocking the visibility for getting across the street. And so, that's why we're requesting the no-stopping, standing, parking for that period, or that area between the two exit and entrances and near the, near the crosswalk. We're also, we're also planning to put a yield to pedestrian delineator and have the, the school signs with the arrows to show this is where the crosswalk is, and then the approach sign leading up to, on both sides. The Health Department is paying for all that signage, so that's, that's what we're requesting. We're just, I'm just focusing on the things that we're asking the village to do. We've had quite a bit of discussion, because we have a police officer that's part of our conversation, to find out about the implications. And the other thing that we wanted to propose was the idea of not allowing left-hand turns to go into the parent drop-off area for that period of time. What ends up happening is that the cars are trying to make a left-hand turn, cars are trying to turn right into it, and there's a lot of congestion right there. And so, we're concerned about that during, just that drop-off and pickup time. So, the proposal is to just not allow no-left-hand turns during that period of time, which I think is 7:00 to 8:00, and 2:30 to 4:00 for going into that area. So, that was pretty much it. If you had questions for either one of us.
Anything else you want to add, Amy? It sounds like it's pretty thorough.
I think it's very thorough, that's why we brought her.[833.76][833.76](Laughter).
That's great. So, questions?
I, oh, go ahead, go ahead, Doug. I worry about the crosswalk, crossing over Pleasant Oak, because kids are a little on the short side. They not, may not always be visible, behind of a taller car, like an SUV, something like that. So, I just wondered, for my own satisfaction, if you could tell me more about some of the details of your plan, to make sure that kids are safe crossing over the street.
Sure. If you, I don't know if you saw the map?
Yeah.
But, so one of the things that we were concerned about was the idea of cars blocking visibility as they're waiting. That's why we want to do the no-stopping, standing. So, the sight line is going to be cleared. The other thing is that we're going to have the delineator in the middle of the road, we're going to have the arrows pointing, this is where kids are crossing. What was happening before, and why we wanted to do this, is that kids were going every which way right there. They're crossing diagonally, they're on both sides of, and so, and I guess we should also say that this is just one aspect of it. We also have to educate the parents and the kids, and there is a plan for educating the kids. The school is developing a brochure where they're going to educate the parents. We're going to be out there the first week of school. We did that with the schools last year, where we're educating everybody. So, the idea of having the crosswalk is that it's very evident that this is the one place where the kids are crossing, and they're not crossing all over the place, because in that stretch between the entrance to the condos and further down where the buses are getting out, kids are crossing everywhere. And we're trying to narrow it down to one location, so cars know this is where they're going to cross.
So, the thicker the double line on this map, their cars may not park. So, they can't stage, they can't wait, they are not allowed in that area, so that there's clear line of sight for kids. And I also noticed, in the parking lot, we've added a crosswalk. What we're going to try to do is educate the students on walking through that crosswalk, up the sidewalk, and then over to the crosswalk on Pleasant Oak, where prior to that, they were walking straight out the main door on a sidewalk that took them right in the center of cars going in and out, and buses going in and out. So, we're going to try to move the children over, and then create a better path. The crosswalk isn't directly in line, because we wanted it up past the condos, but it's close. Mark, that was where his recommendation was, where he wanted to place it.
Any further questions or concerns?
I just wonder, from a traffic flow standpoint, if you go down Wolf Street in the morning, you'll see cars backed up quite a bit, past the school, waiting to make left-hand turns onto Wolf Street after dropping their kids off. And I'm wondering how that's going to, how that's going to work to have that amount of space blocked off, no-stopping, standing, or idling.
So, going on to...
Right here. So, they're going to be right here, turn left. That's where we watched.
Right, okay.
And we actually watched that, and between there and the office complex down, there was big gaps where there were no cars. So, we felt pretty confident that that line can be there. Our biggest thing is the buses, you know, can the buses easily get in and out?
You know, the other thing that I wanted to point out is, this is, so there's two plans. There's a short-term plan, which is what I told you about. There's also a long-term plan. And the, and the long-term plan is that they are going to flip where the cars are dropping off and where the buses are. So, but we feel that that no-stopping, standing, parking is going to be relevant for the long-term plan as well, because the buses are going to be coming out of there, and the cars being there is going to block their sight, the buses trying to get out of there. So, right now, where the cars were, it was blocking the sight, not only of the kids crossing there, but also, also the cars trying to get out. And, you know, when, when we see this being switched over, there's going to be a lot more area for people to be trying to get out. But we, I mean, that, that issue that you're talking about, in terms of Wolf Road, I mean, we, we know that there's a period of time where, you know, where that's going on. That was, that came up as a conversation, like, does that end up having a light there? I mean, but that's a, that's a long-term plan. But we think we're going to help quite a bit by reducing the congestion over on the other end, and at least it's not going to cause congestion right where kids are trying to get across. So, that was...
When you guys were discussing this plan that you're proposing tonight, were there any downsides to the plan that came up, or that weren't, that weren't necessarily able to be addressed?
Well, I think the biggest downside is the volume of traffic. And is there a way that we can, we're, in our brochure, we're actually going to show parents where kids can come in from the backside of the school. There's a walking path, there's a biking path. There's also a walking path over here. So, we're trying to really move more kids to, and parents being comfortable with kids walking and biking to school. So, we need to find different ways to kind of minimize the numbers of people dropping off, but that's our biggest. It's such a big volume over a short time that, can we give kids safe line of sight? Can we give a smooth flow of traffic, so cars can get in and out, and buses can get in and out? That's kind of our step one. We believe, as we move toward the second, we can do more, but with the construction right now, we just can't change the two parking lots.
Thompson Drive, back on Thompson Drive, you can drive in there. It's a car, car hack, and the kids can walk from there.
And they're going to put additional bike racks. We've actually added bike racks in the last year at RCIN, at the middle school. So, the hope is that that will continue.
This is a total, I picked up my grandson. It's scary.
Yeah, it's bad.
Kids walking across in front of cars and...
Yeah, so, I mean, ultimately, this, I mean, we're not all about trying to make it more convenient for parents dropping off kids, but we know that not, the kids, if we want to reduce the congestion and have more kids walking and biking, we've got to do something about the safety right around there, so kid parents would be willing to drop their kids off. So, we've, we've now are educating, like Amy said, about these other options. There's also the path over on the other side. We're also, at the same time, trying to encourage more kids to be walking and biking. The other thing is that the way, I, we haven't even talked about what's happening at the school. One of the things that's happening within the drop-off area is that we've got signage, and we've got people in there that are educating about getting people to move, because what happens right now is somebody goes in there, and they just stop right in the middle, and everybody's backed up. So, what we did at the other school last year is that we're trying to educate people, and we've got signage that gets people moving quickly, and so that it's over quicker, and you're not going to have as many people backed up. So, we're just trying to get them to move along, and this is the part in the street that has an impact on what we're doing inside the property of the school.
That you're still going to have the cars going in, though, right?
Yep.
That's, that was a lot of the problem.
Right.
Because they would stick out almost onto the road, and then somebody else would try to push in there, and that was...
And that's, explain your no-parking in here, because that's part of what was happening, so that will be eliminated?
Oh, yeah. Another, another thing that was happening within the school is that, that was causing congestion inside of the circle, which you probably saw, is that there were people going in, in that middle area, you know, there's visitor parking. And so, that's not being allowed during drop-off and pickup. So, they're just in the circle going in and coming out. There's none of that backing up into the traffic of the drop-off circle. So, they're, we're getting some of the traffic out of there, and we're trying to get them to move around, and these are middle school kids. So, the hope is, unlike the elementary school, they don't have to just stop right in front of the door. Their kid, their child could walk a little bit to the, to the parent or the caregiver car.
They could walk on that a little bit.
I just had a comment. So, I think that this is a great idea, as a parent dropping a daughter off at the school for two years. I wanted to poke my eyes out every single morning. My only concern is that there's no left turn into the parking lot when you're coming from Pleasant Oak. So, are you going to have someone out there, that first week, telling folks you can't pull in, and, and be prepared to have people really upset with you? Because they're going to have to, I don't know, what, what are they going to do at that point?
We did that la, we did that last year. So, over the years, when I've worked with different schools, you know, we usually arrange to go there, like, the first couple of days. Last year, this was my wonderful experience working in Oregon. There's such a, and I didn't mention this, there's the Wellness Committee, too. There's all these partners within Oregon that are part of this discussion, that went out there last year, and during the whole first week and into the second week, we had people there, we had our vests on, and we were educating people. And people aren't happy at the beginning, and you just keep doing it over and over again. The other thing, the Police Department was great with this, is that we've got these really bright brochures, and we almost use them like tickets in a way. So, people come in, and they're not doing the right thing, they've all received it. So, that's the great thing about having a uniform with a badge, that, you know, they'll hand them those bright colored brochures, and they're not getting a ticket, but they're, you know, it's like a warning, you're just educating people and reminding them. So, there's several of us, we probably had 15 people out there last year, staff from the school and other people that are out there educating people over and over and over, day after day, and then eventually, I think, that people understand. But we know that left-hand turn, we're going to have to be out there. It's not going to be a simple thing. We're going to have to be out there and educate people.
And you might almost have to be way up the road.
Yeah.
Not, not at the driveway, because once someone's there, they're going to have to go all the way straight, turn onto Wolf, turn around somewhere, quick trip, whatever, then come back.
Mm-hmm. That's true.
I mean, you might almost, almost want to stop them further up that road, so they can turn around sooner.
Well, and we also anticipate parents dropping their students on that side, and then the kids walking up to the crosswalk.
Okay.
That may happen as well.
Is that, will that be allowed, do you think?
They're, you know, like you said, they'll stop back.
Yeah.
As long as they're not in the no-standing stop. I mean, they'll do some creative things to not turn and not have the issue of going all the way to Wolf Street.
And that's the other part of the educational brochure, is that they're, they're going to be educated as to where they can go, so that they can be thinking ahead before, way before they get to the crosswalk. They can go there, and they, and their child can walk across. So, we'll have somebody over there at the crosswalk, so that we can be educating the kids to make sure that they go there as well as the cars.
This is maybe a small detail, but between the teacher parking lot and Pleasant Oak, there's an area of grass, I think, where the kids would have to walk on?
Andy's working on that.
Okay.
There will be sidewalk, it will be something. So, it continues that crosswalk that is now painted in.
Yeah, so the school district doesn't have that crosswalk across the parking lot marked now. They will. They're going to do that before the beginning of the school year, and then they're putting in something that goes across this, that creates a path to that crosswalk that's in the parking lot. So, it's, yeah, it doesn't really show that well there, but there will be something, so that, you know, winter time, and it will be plowed.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions? And I like the idea of encouraging kids to walk and bike. There was an organization, I was aware of a couple of years ago, it still exists, I would guess it does, called Two Wheels, One World, that gave incentives to kids as far as riding bikes to school. It's all done electronically, and that might be worth checking into also. They've been real successful at some schools, especially elementaries, as far as getting kids to ride bikes to school, which creates another problem.[1603.36][1603.36](Laughter).
And the, so the, the grant funds are also getting another bike rack. We're actually also getting a skateboard rack, because we know there's kids with skateboards, too. So, we're trying to encourage the physical activity, and we're trying to make it safe for them to do that.
Good, that sounds like a good plan to me. So, are we all okay with this? We'll come back at our next meeting if we are. Okay. Looks like we got the green light.
Thank you very much.
So, we're going to take a minute and jump down to item 8A. So, Mr. Leach, you want to come up to the microphone. And item 8A, as discussed, impossible action regarding amended real estate purchase agreement for 784 North Main Street, Oregon LLC, slash Robert G. Hills, Jr., right-of-way for Thompson Drive. So, we've got the map and stuff in here, too.
Well, I think Matt has all the information on that. It's just getting the street right-of-way to put Thompson Drive in, so that would be dedicated over the village for the road right-of-way.
Yes, and this is basically an agreement by which the current owner of the land is agreeing to convey the property to the village. The developer is paying the village's cost, the owner's cost, associated with the agreement and the conveyance, and, and is agreeing to install the public improvements for Thompson Drive. So, that's about it.
It just facilitates the development of that street and that area for, so... Are there any questions?
When, when we do things like this, it affects city maintenance, right? But, because we've had this conversation with Mark before, when we've added streets, and this is, this is my first time going through this, so I'm just trying to think it through forward. So, what's the impact of putting in a street like this on the city improvements, and how is that normally dealt with? Or, not city improvements, city maintenance, like plowing, things of that nature.
So, this, this street will be added to whoever's plowing in that, in that neighborhood, it'll be added to his route.
And it becomes the, it becomes the Village of Oregon's responsibility to maintain, from a surfacing potholes, things like that perspective?
Everything, yep, everything, yep.
And in this case, it's a real short street.
Right.
Two blocks, right, or one long block?
One long block.
Two blocks, yeah.
And as, as I recall, Jim, this, we've been talking about this for a long time, I think, but this street is, I mean, there's already an approved and recorded plat.
Yes.
That, that, that this street will serve, as I recall, and for, for the phase of the plat that you're working on, there was a need to get this public right-of-way to serve those lots that, for whatever reason, it wasn't addressed at the time the plat was...
It bumps up to an older area, and it just never was recorded for that road right-of-way through Mr. Hills's land, so... through, uh, Mr. Hills's, uh, land, so.
Yeah.
The rest of it was, just not, not that piece.
Yeah, and so to answer your question, anytime there's a new subdivision development, it's a general rule, when the plat is approved and recorded, there are public streets and easements for water and sewer infrastructure and so on, dedicated to the community in connection with the plat. And then those become public, um, rights of way. And yeah, the, the developer puts them in in the first instance, pays for the streets and the sewer and the water installation and so on, dedicates them to the village, and then they become the village's responsibility going forward. Of course, the village could choose to specially assess costs for improving streets to the neighboring people who live on, on the streets, but I don't know that we do that here.
Well, you know, sometimes we do, but not, not in the law, we haven't done that.
Yeah. This is kind of a cleanup issue from my perspective. It, it, it's something that needs to happen to serve a plat that's already been approved in this particular case.
Thanks, Matt. So we need a motion, please?
I'll make that a motion.
Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Questions or discussion?
I guess I didn't realize you didn't own this piece of property, Jim. I just assumed you did.
No.
Because you've been representing, uh, the property when you come to these meetings. Because I know you own the property around this.
My mom does.
Or your mom does, but the family did, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
So I learned something tonight.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Go back up to item four, approval minutes. Uh, item A, discussion approving older minutes. And you can read, uh, what Mike and Matt are proposing, that we have language that says, "I move that the village board acknowledge that the minutes of," then insert the meeting dates as prepared by the village clerk's office are the official minutes of said meeting, so.
It's just a way that rather than having some of the board members that weren't on the board at the time abstaining.
Yeah.
You could just accept these, these minutes for the record. Or, or you could continue to do the way you're doing it. We just, we thought, because I am going to be presenting at least six or five sets of twenty-twelve minutes. That's what we think of this.
So this will be quicker?
Um, I don't know if it's quicker, but I think it, I've gotten comments from board members who are uncomfortable voting on old minutes.
Right.
And so really what you're doing is you're, I'll let Matt explain this.
Well, eliminate that discussion. Eliminate all the, okay. The, the key difference in my mind is, instead of voting to approve the minutes, and I think that's where the hang-up was, people were saying, "How can I approve these minutes if I wasn't there?" We've changed that to, uh, saying that the board is acknowledging that the minutes, as prepared by the clerk's office, are the official minutes of the meeting. So you're not saying, "I personally am endorsing these minutes." You're saying, "I recognize that these minutes were prepared by the clerk and that these are the official minutes of that meeting." It seemed like a simple way to solve that problem.
And people could still make additions or corrections.
Oh, yeah.
After the motion.
If you, if you want to do that, um, I don't see a problem doing that.
Okay.
Or, or you can continue to do it the way you're doing it, it's, it's, we just thought we'd give this as an option.
Anybody who doesn't want to try the new option?
Well, does the phrase need to be repeated each time? Or can we just assume that that's the meaning of?
So I'll, I'll put this, this motion on the upcoming agendas. So like next, next board meeting, there'll be minutes from twenty thirteen, you know, I'll have the same thing on the agenda.
Yeah. So I should use this right now?
It's, if that's what the board wants to do.
Anybody who objects to doing this, we'll give it a try. Okay? So I'll go off that proposed language. "I move that the village board acknowledge that the minutes of January seventh, two thousand thirteen, April eighth, two thousand thirteen, and May eighteen, two thousand fifteen, meetings as prepared by the village clerk's office are the official minutes of said meeting." So we need a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion curious. Thank you. Item five is approval of vouchers. Uh, we have vouchers tonight in amount of three hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents per approval.
Move approval.
Did I get the wrong number?
No, you still got to do the twenty fifteen minutes. Or, or did you include all of them?
He said...
Yeah, I read all three.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just got me.
He's not keeping up real well, man.
I mean, you, you, that's fine.
What did I do?
Well, that's fine. But I'm saying, I, I thought you can do it that way. But I, I thought you were just going to use that motion for the older minutes, but, but that's fine.
You're right.
It's older, it's me.
Yeah, that's fine, you're fine.
You're right, it's not...
I'm sorry, I did not hear you say...
What's that, Jerry?
I said, "He's right, it's not going to be quicker."
I, I, sorry.
Mr. Balak with the vouchers.
Sorry. All right, sorry. Sorry for interruption.
Already made a motion.
All three. So in the future, I shouldn't include?
It's your choice.
Fourteen fifteen.
I think the thought was that you would use the motion you did for older minutes.
Yeah.
For minutes that are more recent, meetings that you all were at like a month ago, you would simply revert to, "I move to approve the minutes."
So I think that does make it, it makes it longer and more complicated, because the reality is the board's always going to rotate and as long as minutes are a year old or two years old.
No, they don't.
We had some from just a month or two ago.
Yeah.
Right, so now you're splitting the motion, so it is going to wind up taking longer.
It's going to be two motions.
Two different motions.
Yep.
Yeah.
Does it have to be two motions?
If you use different language for each motion.
What I would do is, I mean, my recommendation is for the ancient history minutes, that none of you were here for, or only one of you was here for.
Actually, there are, actually, four of the board members were here.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's quite a few of us who are here. Use the, use the new language, acknowledge that they are the official minutes. For, for minutes of meetings that you were all at, I would prefer that you use the standard approval of the minutes.
And they'll be on the agenda that way.
I'll try, I'll separate it, I'll physically separate it.
I'll mess it up.
I'm sorry.
It's Mike's fault.
They're doing it colors for speed.
It's my fault. What, what did, in color, you said?
It was most of us that are in there.
Are we set for vouchers?
I, I think we are fine.
Now I have to read vouchers again, right?
Yes, please.
We have vouchers tonight in amount of three hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. For approvals, need a motion, please?
I'll move approval again.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um, I just have a comment, because we kind of went through this with the fire department, um, with regard to the business cards that were ordered by the police department. Do you know how many people had business cards ordered and how many business cards were ordered?
I'm guessing without having that in front of me.
I have, what vendor is it? I have the vouchers here in front of me.
Hatfield?
Hatfield, uh, because he was just...
Oh, so that's the officer.
Right.
Yeah, so how many cards did he get, do you know, offhand?
I...
And the reason I'm asking is because the same thing happened to the fire department, where they got like a box of business cards for sixty dollars. And being on the private side of that, that's, that's probably five boxes of business cards, depending on where you're going. So I'd encourage you to maybe consider shopping your, uh, your vendor.
Yeah, I, I, I would assume it's, it's a box...
Unless you got a ten thousand card.
It's a box of two hundred and fifty or some, something of that nature. But it may not have been, um, was it just for him?
It says, yeah, it was, um, a box of two hundred and fifty business cards for Hatfield, for fifty dollars.
Well, it's just something that you might want to think about, just looking at your vendor. And I encouraged Chief Monar, Monar, Malaric to do the same thing.
Got you.
Chief Jack.
Yes.
And I have a vendor we can get him printed for nothing, I think, if you let me know.
Oh, okay.
We had that same offer at the Fire EMS Commission.
Yeah. About the same place.
Probably the same place, but...
So I'd be happy to let people know that if they ask.
Yeah.
A lot cheaper. They do a job. Anything else on vouchers? Okay, so we have vouchers in the amount of three hundred forty-three thousand, seven hundred eighty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents. Roll call, please.
Brett Howard?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Hudrow?
Yes.
Balak?
Yes.
Thank you, those are approved. Item six is community input. Is there anyone tonight who wishes to address the board this time? Seeing none, we'll go to item seven, proclamations and announcements, board comments?
I don't know if anybody has, uh, I'm sure some board members have, because I've talked to them, but I'd urge you to get out on the new bike trail. Um, it's been overlaid, the asphalt is there. And, uh, I went out on it this afternoon because I wanted to ride on the newly overlaid section of Fish Hatchery Road that goes north. It was a surprise for me to see that, because I was expecting a little bike lane, because I'd been negotiating with county staff and highway staff to get that done for safety reasons, because there was really no shoulder, once you get out there. It's beautiful. Go out there, the bike path is beautiful, uh, goes through a beautiful wooded area, a pretty big section of that. So go out and enjoy it, um, because it, uh, it, uh, it's in great condition. And I want to thank the staff that made that possible and I want to thank the county staff that made that possible, so.
Thanks, Jerry. Anything else? That was a comment I had too, I know, I went out this morning, um, and rode on the Blacktop the first time I was out of town last week, and it is a pretty amazing trail. I think people will love it, whether biking or walking, either way. There's landscaping to be done on each side yet, but, uh, the Blacktop sounds a great surface, it's really fun.
Yeah, you get out in the woods, you can, it's peaceful, the birds are singing, it's just, you don't even believe you're near the village.
And the trail has a variety too. You start by cornfields, which is kind of interesting, but it's kind of fun. And then you get into woods and then, uh, kind of by Lake Barney and then Marsh and Prairie and that type of thing. And there's some variation in terms of, uh, it's not just a straight trail. It varies around and there's some hills going both ways, so it's a fun trail. And the county was great to, uh, connect our trail to what they did on Fish Hatchery earlier, because commuter bikers now can ride into Madison on Blacktop all the way.
Yep.
And they will.
And that was the idea.
That's where they're going to go.
Safe passage to Madison.
And you can also come back into town, which will be nice, so. Any other board comments? And we have the, the ribbon cutting on Saturday, August twenty-ninth, is that ten AM?
At ten AM, yes.
Ten AM, yeah. So, uh, and the Rotary has actually scheduled their meeting at ten AM for the bike trail. So they'll have a lot of members there, so we're looking forward to it. Staff comments?
Just wanted to just say thank you to everyone for their patience while we paved the streets up in that same area of the bike trail, Netherwood and Braun and those streets. As much as we tried to keep the, the roads open, I know it was frustrating for some people. So they're, they're paved and they're, I think it's, they're obviously very nice now. But again, I want to thank everyone for their patience as we went through that, so.
I hope they continue their patience, because MM is going to start very shortly.
Yes.
And that's been a culmination of a three-year request.
Yeah.
That I've been working with the county on, so.
And Hillcrest and Farwell, they're both short streets in my neighborhood, but they were done, uh, maybe a month and a half ago. And the residents there are very happy with it. It's worked out great, yeah.
I do have to make a comment, and they were supposed to start paving up on our, the road construction up on the north end and they didn't start it, huh?
I, they had...
Today, there's nothing in there at all.
Yeah, the sign was obscene today, but I...
I don't know if the overlay on Fish Hatchery had any bearing on it or not. That was a complete surprise to me. So maybe they juggled things around.
Maybe, yeah.
They're also, the contractor is still working on Janesville Street.
Yep, that's a little bit longer, yeah.
That's a mess.
They've got a lot on their plate right now, so I hesitate to say much, because they've been so great to work with.
Yeah. Anything else from staff? Okay. We'll go to item eight B, email from Judge Cox requesting the board not issue an alcohol beverage license to Ice Arena. I will read that. It's, uh, Judge Cox says, "I want to express my concern about granting a license, even with restrictions, to group-sharing facilities with a school. I believe such an action sends a wrong message to the community and to our kids. I encourage the board to vote this down." That's what Judge Cox had to say about that. Uh, we will go to the next side of our agenda, which is item C, uh, review of proposed conditions for Oregon Ice Arena's request for a Class B permanent mall beverage license and possible action by the village board. Ben, you'll come to the mic, so you're ready when we have questions. And, uh, Matt, you want to take a run through these to start us with and then we'll start discussing them.
Sure. At the last meeting I attended when this issue was discussed, the board identified a number of conditions that it wanted, uh, us to consider attaching to the approval of the license. And so I prepared a resolution that incorporates those conditions, um, which is included in your packet. One thing that, um, I don't recall if it was specifically discussed at the meeting, but I was asked whether it would be feasible to, um, limit the license to a one-year license so that instead of the usual procedure, all licenses under the law expire on June thirtieth of the year and, and the applicant has to apply for renewal. But the, the usual procedure is that people are entitled to renewal of the license unless there are grounds for non-renewal, which is a different standard than what you're looking at today with this license, which it's a new license, it's not a renewal. So the board has pretty broad discretion to decide whether in the public interest the license should be approved or not. So the question was, could we structure this so that, um, a year from now, instead of the renewal standard, you have an opportunity to look at it with fresh eyes in, based on a year of experience and decide again whether it's appropriate to issue the license or not? So the way we address that issue is to say that, um, the applicant would need to enter into an agreement that I would need to approve, that would provide for that. That's one of the conditions. That's the last condition, actually, but it's the most complicated one, I think. Let me just review the other conditions. Um, I'm on the resolution, page two, sub one A. Sub one says, "The application is approved subject to the following conditions." So the first condition is that the premises, and the premises means the area where alcohol can be sold or served or stored. We say, "The premises shall be limited to areas inside the building. In addition, alcohol may be stored only, only in accordance with the plan required in section one B of this resolution." We'll talk about that in a minute. The thing I added to this was a question. Does the board want to provide a more specific description of locations of the building where alcohol may be sold, served, and consumed? If so, the applicant should be required to provide a detailed floor plan describing where, uh, where those things could take place. Chief Burke, I believe, indicated that in his judgment, he would have an opportunity to address those issues through the plans that are required in other conditions. So that would be another option for dealing with that issue. But it's up to the board. You can either leave it as it is here in one A and say, "In the building, subject to what further conditions Chief Burke attaches in connection with his review of plans." Or you could get more specific. So that's A. B requires the chief to approve a written plan specifying the location where alcohol will be stored, the manner in which it will be secured, the manner in which it may be accessed and the persons who will have access. And this is a plan that must be approved by the chief before the license would be effective. Next, item one C, alcohol beverages may be sold one hour before and until the end of Whalers' games against league opponents. Alcohol may be sold at other times or other events only with prior approval from the village board. And we talked about this at the last meeting. D, no alcohol beverage specials may be used, advertised, or promoted. Alcohol beverage specials shall include any of the following. Sale, offering, or delivering of multiple alcohol beverages for the price of one alcohol beverage. Sale, offering, or delivering of alcohol beverages at a reduced price. Sale, offering, or delivering to any person an unlimited number of alcohol beverages during a set period of time for a fixed price. Finally, any game or contest which involves awarding any alcohol beverage as a prize. Now, I'm not really an expert on alcohol beverage specials, but those are the things we came up with.
Letting go of the old and somewhat embracing the new. And when I look at, um, Judge Cox's comments and I look at the verbiage that's in this document, one thing that strikes me is that this Oregon Ice Arena has recognized as everything from the place where at-risk youths go to finish school, all the way now to a place where adults will go to watch summer professional hockey. And that's a lot of range. And I'm wondering if maybe that's something for you to consider, uh, that that is the perception. And I think in a way, it, it puts people on opposite ends of the spectrum And I think in a way, it puts people on opposite ends of the spectrum into a conversation that is tough to get through. Just a comment.
Yeah, so that kind of leads to some comments I'd like to make going forward. Because I, I've given this a lot of thought. It's not, I don't want the arena to-
So as long as it's outside in the caddy, it's not visible from within the rink?
And the caddy's locked?
Caddy's locked. Can't even see it when you pull up.
When you say caddy, what do you really mean? Because it's not a catalyzed-
Like a beer, like a beer cooler on.
It's a trailer.
It's a trailer.
Trailer.
It's a trailer with a compressor on it.
It's just like a summer fest.
So I'd make a few comments. After the article was in the Oregon Observer a couple weeks ago, I think it was the lead story, I was down at the Firefly having a cup of coffee, and I had three different people come up to me and urge me to vote no on this, and two of them were your board members. So then I got the email from Judge Beth Cox. Then if you go out to Facebook, and the Oregon Observer put the story on their page, if you read the comments, the comments kind of revolve around this. What's coming to me have been saying, "Why in the heck would you give a liquor license to an arena that is primarily used for youth?" And I've heard all the arguments here tonight, but I feel like I have to, I have to support those, those folks. Because I haven't, no one's come up to me and said, "Jeanne, you have to vote for this."
Because nobody's gonna, nobody tells that. It's people that-
Well, Ben, the other problem here is, if you want to get into it, is-
I don't.
It's, it's you. I know at the last meeting you came here and said you're a changed man, but there's still folks that, that have reservations in you having an alcohol license running that space. And I didn't, I don't know if I want to bring that up or not, but that's what's out there. So I'm, I'm gonna vote no on any sort of license because that's what I feel like I need to do, and that's what folks have asked me to do. So I wanted to explain my no vote. I vote no.
Thank you for being clear about that. And, you know, Ben, we do have what's called standards for issuance of new alcohol licenses and permits, and there are some things there that caused me to have issues, like Jeanne said, you know, oh, 106 and 07, and those are issues. And a couple other things in there, in there, too, that I won't go into, but, but those are issues. I just think it's a shaky thing to do because of the arena, the youth, and what we have on those standards. Other comments?
I just want to make a comment. I know, I know the beer, beer part of it, I don't, I don't always agree with it, but I know they do want to keep this ice arena going, and they had a hard time starting this ice arena because the village really didn't stand behind, behind it at all. They started out with a big amount of money that they had to pay to start this ice arena. And it has put out a lot of good, young kids, but I don't want to see it fold up. And it might, it might. And if you, if you look into Sunday's paper, Sun Prairie Ice Arena has done so well for Sun Prairie, and they too have these kind of sessions, and so does Wannakee. And I'm afraid we're gonna lose it. And I know with the people that have put their heart and soul into this ice, ice arena, and I don't want to see it fold. But I know, I know, I understand about the beer, but if it's, that's just a small part of it, but we want to bring these people in to play here, and I know there's a lot of people here-
That are targeted to adults, not youth, and that the adults that go to these events are gonna want to have a beer when they're there. And it's not hard liquor, it's a beer, or a couple of beers. So I think, you know, you brought up the Align Energy Center, Jerry. The Align Energy Center is a multi-purpose building. You know, they'll have Disney on Ice, and they'll have hard rock concerts. And I'm sure that the, that the beverages and the refreshments that are sold are tailored to the audience that comes and uses the Align Energy Center. And it's, and it's not a youth center, but it's a center that can be used for youth events. So I really would encourage us to think about our ice arena the same way. It can be used for youth events, we're not talking about that right now. We're talking about adult events, and the law can be enforced, as it's enforced everywhere else in the village.
Other comments?
I just want to respond to a couple of comments that Darlene made. She made some good points, and one of the points was, back when the arena was started, that the village didn't stand behind it. I think that's the way you put it. We looked at the financials at that time, and we deemed that it was not a viable enterprise at that time. That's why we didn't have anything to do with it. That's why we didn't want to invest village funds or in debt to taxpayers to sponsoring or funding a youth ice facility, because we didn't think, we thought it would be a tax levy viability. And I just wanted to respond to that. It wasn't that we defaulted on our promise or anything like that at that time. I, boy, this is a, this is a touchy issue, a very emotional issue. I, again, Ben, I want this to succeed. I, I, I can't, you know, I brought up the Alliance Center, but again, that's like comparing the moon to Pluto. I, I, they're not even in the same realm. The Alliance Center is, is a much different facility. This was a youth hockey facility that you now want to have a semi-pro team in, and you want it to serve alcohol, make it viable. I hate to see, I hate to think that we, again, that we have to sell alcohol to make something a viable enterprise that's associated with youth. I, I'm gonna have trouble supporting this. This is gonna go right down to the wire for me. But I, I-
I add to what Jerry said, also Darlene, is we didn't support it because it wasn't financially viable. We encouraged the leadership, time after time, to have half the cash on hand before you start to build it.
Right.
Had that been done, this would not be an issue. It would have been taken care of, and the bank would have lost tons of money.
Right.
But that wasn't done. That's what was done to force Wannakee. They had to have half the cash on hand before they would build the arena. And they did, and it's been successful. We encouraged that, it didn't happen, and it's been a struggle ever since. And it cost the bank a lot of money, which is none of your doing.
Right. That's very true, Steve, but those cities, their, their cities gave the land to their ice arenas. Sun Prairie and Wannakee both did. They gave the land.
Do you remember the price in our land?
I, I don't.
I think it was $40,000, as I recall.
Which I don't see as making a break on a $3 million facility.
No.
And again, we had reservations about getting involved, just when we didn't think it's financially viable, which it wasn't.
But we're kind of getting off topic here.
So can I just, can I have a couple more comments?
Yeah.
So going back to kind of what we talked about last time, so, and Darlene just brought Sun Prairie. So Sun Prairie is a beautiful new two-sheet facility. They have a full-on restaurant, alcohol bar within the facility. Okay, Kiva, which is the most family-friendly place in Dane County, they have three soccer fields, you know, they have tons of stuff going on, and literally hundreds of thousands of kids that go through there every year. Full bar, full liquor. They host major concerts, you know, major events with their. I'm asking for 22 home games. That's it. Just beer, I'll have it off the premises within 24 hours afterwards, all the conditions apply, let's do it for a year. At the end of the year, I'll come back and we'll do this all again. 22 games, that's it.
And I was starting to, waivers went through this from my original statement, but what Jeanne said had a big impact on me also, as far as people approaching her and saying that they, they were opposed to it, don't have to do this.
Could we, would we be willing to table this conversation and appeal to the community and let anybody who has an opinion weigh in?
I don't have a problem with that.
The reason I ask is, is we're getting some good feedback, but I don't know that it's representative per se in terms of the numbers. And if we gave everyone an opportunity to speak, and we come back here next week and we've got no emails, then, then that, to me, that says a lot, and conversely.
I like Jeff's idea for a number of reasons. Number one, Judge Cox's email came in at the 11th hour. You know, I didn't know about it till I got the packet. And, you know, we really, we had a public opinion, nobody was, a public hearing, and nobody was here. So maybe we can, I don't know, if we want to have another public hearing and invite people to come down, especially Judge Cox. I'd like to know exactly, you know, I'd like to hear Judge Cox have some remarks on this too, you know, and give this a fair shake.
Maybe we can open up Facebook? Have people go out to our face, could you put something out on the Facebook page? Have people go out and-
Sure. Absolutely. I'd like to hear from the school, too. I know I've heard that at least one school board member would like to have Oasis move out if there's a liquor license granted, and then-
But it doesn't affect, it doesn't-
Then you're in big trouble.
So the whole, like, Facebook stuff, okay, so when you scroll through Facebook, Jeff, I don't know if you're on Facebook or not.
I am not. You will not find that Facebook, you'll find it on LinkedIn.
Yeah, right. 99% of stuff is either about cats, dogs, or something negative. Okay? People don't take the time to write something positive about anything these days. You know, maybe if you ask them, but you're gonna get the same thing, you're gonna get the handful of people that, you know, don't like me, which probably more than a handful, okay, are gonna type, "You can't give this to Ben," blah, blah, blah. It's just, I just don't know if that's, I, I don't know if it's more of a go and get signatures, bring people in, because as soon as you start opening social media up to this thing, like, it's, it's all negative.
Well, it gives you an opportunity, too, though, to go back to your board and rally your support, and give some, I mean, it's just, I'm trying to find easy channels in case people can't make a village board meeting, or I guess email's an easy channel, too. They email Mike Grace and Mike Prince at-
Yeah, I must prefer emails myself, and to me, a petition is meaningless. Takes seconds to sign your name. I mean, I get petitions in middle school once in a while from kids, and I see, and it's great, but here's how you really get things done, it's not with a petition.
But we don't have to open up Facebook, right? I mean, if, if you feel that'd be better to go email, you feel it better, it'd be better to go email, then let's just say, "Email Mike Grace." What's your home email address?
I'll tell you afterwards.
Yeah.
If the board wants to solicit public input-
Yeah.
That's fine. I think you have to be really thoughtful about how to do it and what the significance of it is. I've been through a rather interesting project in another community. And what I've, what, what, what I've come to conclude is that it's very difficult to, first of all, make judgments about whether input is representative, even if you have an election. I mean, there's still debates about how to interpret the election. And you're not going to get anywhere near close to an election result on this issue. You know, if, if various people send in emails, and some people come in, and you hear from both sides, ultimately, it's still gonna come back to this group to make a decision about what you believe is the appropriate decision. So I don't want to say, "Don't do it," but don't expect it's gonna make it any easier to make the decision. And, and in some ways, it might even make it harder, because now you will inject into the process an additional set of questions about how to interpret what was said, who had more people showing up on one side or the other side. And really, it shouldn't be about that. It shouldn't be, you know, who is more effective at rallying people to come out. Sorry, my daughter. Can I call you back? Okay. She said, "Yes, I could call her back." But if, if you want to do it, then, first of all, I find that people coming to the meeting and speaking is more valuable than emails.
Got you, too.
We actually had in another community a big debate about whether emails should even be allowed to be read at meetings after hours of listening to emails being read at meetings. So if, if you want to have public input, then I would think about when to schedule it, making sure there's adequate time for people to be aware that it's gonna happen. You know, I wouldn't do it next week, that's not enough time. When's your first game?
September 11th.
So you got a little time. Make sure that it's scheduled at a time that is likely to give people the opportunity to know what's happening and to get here, and, and make sure that you get word out to the community that you're gonna have an opportunity to come and talk to the board if you, if this is important to you. That, those are my comments.
So Matt's recommending that we have another public forum and have people here to speak to us, and I think it's much more valuable than emails or anything else. Now, I've, I've been doing this in my 13th year now, and I have never had enough people talk to me about an issue to cause me to have to vote a certain way. Still comes down to us, what do we think when we get here? Because we have typically more information than anybody else when these things happen. But coming and sitting and talking to us is, is what I think is the most significant. Looks like people agree with that. So-
Public forum. And probably, if you don't want to do it next week, then it would probably be the 17th of August.
Remember, it's summer, people are busy.
Well, otherwise, otherwise, we, we could do it in September, it would be the, our, our meeting actually would be on, obviously, we're not gonna have the meeting on Labor Day, so we could do it on the, on the Tuesday, the 8th.
You're-
I'm sorry, when's the first?
September 11th.
When's, when's the next game after the 11th of September?
The 18th. But we can't start off, like, if we start it off without, it's just, it's dead.
But if you, if you have a meeting on the 8th and make a decision that night, the license could be delivered the next day. But that requires you make a decision right after the hearing. It doesn't allow for the two weeks. Oh, we need-
I think, I think we have to do it on the 17th. I know it's summertime, but-
Sounds like the 17th.
Yeah.
Okay.
August.
17th to August.
August 17th.
So are we gonna take email?
So, so how- People can send them, but in my mind, people sitting at the table and talking to us will have more influence than, and like, like Matt said, you know, there's not gonna be a groundswell of people coming.
Right.
It still comes down to what we have to make. It's not gonna make a decision easier.
Public hearing.
Yeah.
Nothing.
Yeah.
Well, and our emails are all on the public, on the village website, right?
Yes.
So do you want people to email us as a group, or email you, or what?
It doesn't matter.
I guess people will figure it out.
I mean, I think-
I thought you were going with, I thought you were going with, "No communication, you can show up and talk."
Well, some people, some people are just gonna send me an email, and so you have to decide if you want me to put this in the packet or not.
Sure.
I mean, it's many of them, yeah.
Those, I wonder if those would need to be read, or if they would just be for our information only, to Matt's point?
My recommendation is that they be provided to trustees, but they not be read at the meeting. I just think it, it didn't seem to, to work very well in another case where-
Yeah.
They're public information, so we could have a copy of them-
It can be on the website.
We'd have all printed and stamped together, that people could have a copy that came to the meeting that night if they wanted to see them.
Yeah, typically, we don't-
It could be on a packet, right? So people have them online that way.
Yeah, typically, we don't read the emails. All, and Eric is right, they're public information. I copy them, they put, they go in the packet, they refer to them or not, depends. But yeah, I think you can't, if somebody's gonna email something to the board, you can't, you can't say, "Well, we're not gonna, we're not gonna read them or, or put them in the packet." That would be, that would-
Yeah, they're in the packet, they're online, they're available, everybody wants to see it, so, okay.
But, but I think the, what Matt's saying, the focus should be on the public forum.
Yeah.
I think we should call it a public forum, because we already have the public hearing.
Right, I do, too. Okay. Does that work for everybody?
One time.
Okay. That's the plan, that, Ben.
What, what time? August 17th? Do you have time?
That, that meeting's gonna start at, well, 5:00 o'clock.
Any other comments, Ben, from where we are?
Um, so, I, so what we do on August 17th-
Yeah.
Is like a public, so people can come in and talk?
Yeah.
Either way?
We do that on issues. Public forum.
So I guess my question, and that's, that's fine, we can do that, is, so we've come in here for years with the alumni attorney and other events, and gotten approval for the weekend events, okay, which are probably way more people involved, like way more times alcohol served, way more planning, everything, and we've never had an issue. Like, not one issue ever with either getting approval, putting on the event, or any aftermath. So I guess I'm just confused, like, I'm willing to accept all these conditions, which is crazy, okay? No other person, bar owner, restaurant would ever think of doing that. I'm willing to accept these for 22 games? Like, I, I don't, I guess I'm just misunderstanding, like, where, where all the disconnect on my side is. Like, if we've been so successful, and I'm just asking for this, why is this a huge public forum debate?
Well, it's not huge. It'll be who wants to show up, which could be what's in the audience right now, and maybe, well, time will tell. But the difference in my mind with the, um, the alumni tournament and this is, that's one night, it's one event. I didn't have total comfort with that, but I didn't have enough discomfort to, uh, not go along with it.
I mean, those are, those are three-day events.
Yeah.
With bands and, like, beer tents.
Yeah, this one time was done. It was over, it's gone.
Any other thing, Ben? Again, the liquor, or the beer, I should say, was brought on site and then it was gone.
And I'm willing to do that also.
Right, right, no, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, you're asking, "What's the difference?" And the big difference now is, uh, we have our village judge has weighed in against it. That's huge. And then, uh, Genie is getting some input from some of your board. That's kinda huge in my mind, too. Um, those are all things we just found out.
Yeah.
Recently. So it's not like, we're not trying to pick on you. And bar that stuff, this thing would've been over. So, I, I, I don't mean overdone, I mean, you would've been approved probably. So, um, when you ask, "What's the difference?", I'm just trying to explain it to you.
Okay. So that's the process. Matt would need to write that guideline up about the alcohol comes on site, is used at the event and it's gone. That would have to be a condition that would be written in, so if we need to act that night, it's ready to go.
Yeah, we can amend the resolution.
So what we can do is, yeah, we can build that into the resolution and then you can make the resolution available to the public before the forum, so people would understand that what the board is considering is whether to approve the license subject to those conditions. Because I think it's important for people to understand what the parameters are, um, and not maybe have some misapprehension about what's being proposed here.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll get that out to you.
I mean, is there, is there a, is there a downside of just using Facebook just to publicize the forum? I mean, we're not, we're not encouraging people to give comments, we're just saying the forum's gonna be here and we could, we could actually put there and then have referred to the we- website for the resolution.
You can, you can educate the people about.
Right. That's why, that's why we started Facebook and, you know.
Also the, uh, the village webpage.
Yeah, so we, we do both.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a really good question, though, is, you know, and what is the purpose of Facebook and how will the village use Facebook? Have you, have you drafted a policy about the use of Facebook yet?
I, I have a, I have a draft policy, but, but basically, right now administratively, we're not, we're not responding somewhat, but for example, if somebody reset, you know, sent a comment in the candy about this, we'd say, "The resolution's on the webpage." We're not gonna get into discussing the issues and things like that. A lot of communities that rushed into Facebook now, basically have done that, it's a one-way communication.
I got just my comment here. Um, I had a few people encourage me to vote no on this tonight. I came here thinking I was gonna vote no on this tonight. Seeing the, um, the restrictions we put on it and when we're gonna add that restriction about for the whalers only, I'm thinking in my mind, well, you know, that's maybe going the right direction. And I was toying with maybe voting yes, voting no. I didn't know how I was gonna vote yet. So I think by waiting another couple of weeks, it's gonna be beneficial for everybody.
Yeah. Thank you. Eric, do you think there's Samaritans having the beer haul out of there?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
And that, and that's what I liked, that last restriction, you know, bring him in at 2:00 or 3:00, whenever he can get it there, you know, as close to the end of the day of school as possible, and if it's out before Monday morning.
Well, before the children return.
Right, well, that would be Monday.
Yeah. I don't know.
Well, you're talking like youth hockey, showing up on Saturday for practice.
Yeah.
Okay, then it would have to, yeah.
It'd be all locked up.
Right.
Well.
Yeah. In that trailer, ready to go, they pick it up as early Saturday morning as possible.
Correct.
Yeah.
Are, are the games always on the same night of the week or is it different?
Different. Yeah, so 12 Fridays, 8 Saturdays, 2 Sundays, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, and then a random Thursday night. Wow, that's pretty good. That's good right there, remember that?
What's that?
That's a pretty good memory right there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's.
You just made it up.
We wouldn't know. That adds to 22, I was like.
Yeah, I was trying to add that up, we went too fast. Anything else from the board? Okay. So that's the process.
Okay, so 17th?
Yeah.
5:00?
Yeah. It'll be at the top of the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, item D, discussion possible, ask you on the new Family Medical Leave Act policy?
This was on the, um, agenda last week, but, uh, a board member correctly said that Eric's gonna abstain from it, so we need to, we put it back on the agenda.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of it has to do with the, uh, just an update that Kyle wanted to have for our employee handbook.
So it was a goal last week, except we didn't have enough.
Right, and it's, a lot of it has to do with domestic partnerships.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
One quick question. Uh, Kyle mentions that there should be a manager trained in the FMLA, should be, should be involved to handle general requests for purposes of uniform application. Does the village have somebody that?
I wrote, "We do."
That's you.
That's what that little notice.
That's you.
Yeah, it's, it's Peggy.
Oh, it's Peggy.
We, we do not do it by.
Oh, on here it says, "We do."
Thanks, Matt.
Oh, yeah, right, okay.
Thanks, Matt.
We do not do it by department. Peggy handles it all.
Good luck, Maron.
That's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Yep. You couldn't read my note there on the.
In case you have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion?
Just, just for the record, I'll be abstaining on this.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so 601 with one abstention from Mr. Cool, thank you. Item E, information from the youth center for April, May, and June. Um, I got this earlier, for some reason, I sent a note to Diana, we appreciate this.
Aye, aye, aye.
Keeping up with this, so.
Aye, aye.
Any questions on that, the youth center? They've, uh, recovered very nicely from when the Y deserted them, so good for them.
They're doing very well.
Yeah. And next is discussion information about accurate appraisal and status of new assessor agreement. Uh, this is possibly, refer this to the August 10th finance meeting.
Um, you know, the board authorized, uh, the, the staff to get, you know, to do a, uh, RP to get a proposal for, uh, assessor work and, um, you know, Ackert was gonna get a proposal from the village, um, and then we saw this information and I, I think I'd just like to ask the finance committee to maybe start the, the process over again, like to have a discussion with them at the meeting. And my second question is, you want Lee to come and discuss the situation with the committee in August?
So he'd come to August 10th?
Yeah.
Finance meeting.
I'd be interested to hear what he's got to say.
I would too.
I would, I think it's, I mean, because basically, the, the email, not, not to be a wise guy, but the email got written by their, their PR firm. Because when I read it, I'm like, I got it, I said, "Peggy, what, what exactly does this say?" And then Peggy found the article, I went, "Oh, that's what it says."
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I think, uh, I think, I think you should come and talk to the finance committee. And, I mean, and the board can then say, continue with our P process, but don't include them or, you know, but include them. Um, I think, as the article says, it sounds like some other firms are doing this as well and so the state, the state is jumping on them, uh, trying to correct this, so. So I think it'd be good to hear what he has to say.
Yeah, I do.
Well, after, those, those are some interesting, uh, situations that they're involved with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll lay into the meeting.
Okay. Okay, we'll go on to item G, police officer recruitment.
Um, the last police officer recruitment that we did that probably started, um, first part of May, um, unfortunately, the two candidates that we, uh, we, we actually had three candidates that, uh, were going to be moved on to interviews with the police commission. Um, our top candidate, uh, prior to those interviews was hired by the, uh, city of Manona. Uh, the commission interviewed, uh, candidates number two and three and, um, certified both of those individuals as being, um, acceptable. Um, we did background investigations on, uh, both individuals and neither one of them met, um, our acceptable standards, so we have closed out that process with, um, without having a candidate. Um, I just received today, um, permission from Mike to, uh, begin a new, uh, recruitment process, so we will be starting, um, over again in the hopes that we might get some, I'd, I'd like to have somebody, uh, identified before I leave, anyway. Um, um, I, uh, I've come up with a, um, a draft timeline for this next process that, um, would potentially, if, if things, um, go according to plan, uh, would potentially have somebody starting at the end of September. Um, the only, the only good, um, side of that is that, um, our two field training officers, um, who have been very busy for pretty much the last year, uh, will get a little bit of a break, uh, between when, uh, Jason Montez is done with field training and when the next one would start, so, um, they, they, they deserve a little bit of a, of a break and while it's not, um, not completely advantageous for us, um, you know, it'll, it'll be, uh, a well-deserved, uh, respite for them. Uh, but, uh, like I say, I would, accord, if, if everything goes according to my, uh, my draft timeline, uh, we would at least have somebody identified, uh, by the very end of August and then we would start the, um, uh, background investigations in psych and physical and then assuming all of those things are acceptable, then, you know, somebody has to give two weeks' notice and, like I say, we, um, would hope to have somebody, um, starting by the end of September. So that's kind, kind of where we're at with that, with that process.
How many officers have you hired?
Uh, three, I believe.
That's what I was thinking, it was three, so, okay. You said you'd like to have this, somebody identified before you leave?
Yes.
Okay. Actually, you can't leave until you're identified, just so you know. So, that's our timeline.
That's a good point, Steve, yeah.
Yeah, the way it goes, let's just start, you gotta finish.
It's one of those things, I, you know, we're not, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take people that aren't, you know, the, the best possible, um, uh, people and I, I firmly believe that we're gonna, we're gonna get that individual, so come hell or high water.
We will. Good. Which leads to our next, um, the chief's report, summary of investigation activity. And anybody that reads through that, uh, us and online, I think should really appreciate what our officers do. It's, there are a lot of tough things that they face that they're, that they're doing and, and just a note of appreciation to them and your leadership for this, because.
No, I'd just like to add also, um, it's great getting this information.
Yeah.
It's, I, I don't know about anybody else, but it really opened my eyes to what's going on in this village.
Yeah. By far the best report we ever had.
Ever.
Yeah.
I mean, there's more information in there than I've gotten on 14 years on the board.
Yeah. This is what we need to know and it's.
Yeah, and I, and I hope if, if anybody has any, any questions about anything that they see, that you won't hesitate to, you know, give either myself a call or, um, Lieutenant Pagenkoff or whatever, um, you know, and we'll be happy to answer any, any questions that you have regarding anything that you see on these, uh, on these sheets. Obviously, anything that we can share with you, but, um, certainly, if you have, if you have questions, uh, we're more than willing to, uh, answer those. As we, as you kind of heard with, um, uh, regarding the question with the business cards, uh, Jeremy Hatfield, who was the, uh, school resource officer, um, he has been, uh, promoted to detective and has started those duties and, uh, just last week, we, um, held interviews for the, uh, position of school resource officer to replace Jeremy and we had, um, three of the, um, three of the principals from the, uh, school district involved in the, um, in the process and they were unanimous in choosing, um, Officer Jeffrey Sattlemeyer to be the new school resource officer. So he will be, um, he, he's actually, um, starting training with the, uh, school district tomorrow, uh, but, uh, he will officially begin his, his new duties, uh, the 1st of September.
Great, thanks. Anything else, excuse me, on, on chief's report, any questions? But again, please let them know that as we look through this, we appreciate what they're doing. It's a lot more than sitting in the car with the radar out.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah. So item I, review of investments.
Just a.
Was Lisa worried about this? She left.
She had a softball.
Making a lot of money doing it.
It's okay, I wanted to talk about it.
I, I will tell her that, I'll see her tomorrow.
Any questions on it? Okay, so item nine, reported committees, there are none before us tonight. Item 10, minutes not requiring action, none tonight, and unfinished business, there's none tonight. Uh, new bus, new business. Item A, approval of pending new operator licenses. These have been approved by the police department. At the stop and go, Trista Bickel and Cindy Omira. And a quick trip, Brittany Lampkin. So move, we got a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Sorry, Paul, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That's all right, not a problem.
I thought you were gonna go one at a time.
Probably should.
One, two at a time.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B is renewal, there are none tonight. Have a list of future agenda items, people can find on line if they'd like to. Uh, board members, be sure and take a look at, um, the dates for budget meetings, so we get those on, we can all be present for those. Item 14, the board may adjourn in a closed session during the meeting pursuant to Wisconsin statute, section 19.851(c) to discuss approving candidate for director of public works position and to consider co- compensation for the director of public works position and village administrator, and we'll adjourn from closed session. So need a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Here.
Yes.
Markender?
Yes.
Staten?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Brethauer?
Yes.
Udrow?
Yes.
Grenier?
Yes.
Thank you. We will go into closed session.